Clover has been doing a lot of really important work for the Food Bank. As we've launched, together with the Lincoln Community Foundation, Bridges Out of Poverty, which many of you have heard something about, or a little about, or a lot about, in Getting Ahead and Just Getting By World. Carl and Leirion met with us a couple of weeks ago and connected us to some city departments that we think we can help with training and education. And Clover is going to talk today, mostly about workforce stability and everything that we're doing in those regards. The ideal thing would be that the whole community can benefit from this. So we're appreciative of the opportunity to appear before you today. And Clover, the floor is yours, as far as I'm concerned.
I've got a question. Didn't we have a meeting two or three years ago?
It's been four years.
Four years.
We brought Phil DeVal to town. He's one of the authors that have been heavily involved with this. We had a great turnout, and just about at the same second, Vital Signs, the first Vital Signs came out.
That's right.
And so, there was a real nice segue there to, you know, community activity. And Lincoln Community Foundation and Clover have been. And Brian Sek, through his work with Prosper Lincoln, have just been instrumental in pushing this along, and starting to get some traction. We're really excited about it.
Do you want to explain what the handout was that you gave? A little background?
Bruce Wright is an attorney who's on the board of the Food Bank of Lincoln. And Bruce has really embraced Bridges Out of Poverty and the ideas about it. We view it as our, the part of our business that is, we call line shortening. If we can get somebody out of a food bank, mobile pantry distribution, or out of a shelter, and so that they don't need food assistance, that's the best work we can do. It's not the broadest work we do, but we do have a, we feel like an obligation and responsibility to get people out of our lines if we are able, and we are able. And Bridges Out of Poverty is our tool to do that. So Bruce and Phil DeVal, who is one of the primary authors, put this thing together, and it's kind of a, it's a brief, fairly brief, synopsis of what Bridges Out of Poverty and Getting Ahead and Just Getting By World are all about. If you see Bruce, tell him I gave it to you. That'll score points for me, which is really what this is all about, in the end.
Well, thank you, Scott. I appreciate the introduction. I am a certified trainer now in Bridges Out of Poverty. And specifically, my role, what the Food Bank wanted me to do, is go out and talk to businesses and employers. Because we understand that businesses are the ones paying employees, and that there often is some strife in keeping those lower-wage employees in place, which of course provides them with stability. So I'm here today, and I'm going to give you, I'm going to show you some slides that act, that are similar, or that are part of the presentation that I give to businesses. But it's, it's a little bit more informative, designed to help you sort of think about our economically diverse citizens that we have in Lincoln. And as we know, most people who are living in poverty right now are working. We have lots of open jobs. Last I heard, was 4,000 open positions in Lincoln. And, but we still have people living in poverty. So I want to just kind of give this, give you some background information. Similar bits and pieces of the presentation that I give to businesses. Like Scott mentioned, we have already met with Doug in HR to talk about how we might be able to work with some of the supervisors and managers in different departments. But this is more just sort of informative for you. So, as was mentioned, the economic workforce stability piece I'm going to be talking about is a part of Bridges Out of Poverty. Really, Bridges Out of Poverty is designed to prevent poverty, support people in that transition, and ultimately, to eliminate poverty. There is no roadmap, and every community seems to take it on and make it their own in a way that will work best for their community. And the things that Scott mentioned are Getting Ahead classes, and me going out there and talking to employers, and talking to you today, is all in an effort to help reduce our poverty in our community. What Aha! Process or Bridges Out of Poverty tells us is that really, the solution to poverty lies in our societal systems, and that policy sort of overarches everything that includes the individual, the institutions in which they work, and the community that supports them, like our nonprofits. So it's all very reliant on one another. It isn't one entity that's going to solve the problem. And, so I hope maybe you'll look at some of the things we talk about today through your policy lens, and thinking about how, how policy is made, and how we, how we are able to keep in mind, perhaps, people who don't look at life, or are leading life through the same lens that we have always looked through. So what we know about Lincoln is that good help is hard to find. The latest statistic I saw is that our unemployment rate is 2.4%. That, not sure if it's been updated since then. But we also know that a lot of people are working part-time, and multiple jobs, in order to make ends meet. We know that Nebraska ranks one of the highest in the nations of people that work multiple jobs. We are hard-working people. We know that over 62% of businesses are having trouble finding employees, and that those people who are unemployed, which there aren't very many, but 97% of those want to be working. So they just either aren't qualified for the positions that are available, or somehow, some kind of disconnect. We also know that Prosper Lincoln is working on that piece of how do we get people certified, or a little bit of advanced education that might be able to get them qualified for some of these open positions? And they're doing a lot of work in that. So I'm going to tell you a story throughout this of somebody named Melissa. Melissa is, she's got a job, she's an employee at perhaps one of our manufacturing companies, or one of our great local companies. And she was hired in a position that tends to have a lot of turnover. What we know about that is it tends to be our lowest-wage employees that seem to have the greatest turnover. This is the point in the presentation with businesses that I asked them, how long do you expect Melissa to be with you? And the answer ranges anywhere from three weeks to three months. The really lucky ones have about nine months. So about, average, I'm hearing about six months. That's what I'm hearing most often. Well, that's a lot of effort to put into somebody who's going to leave. But they're leaving for a variety of reasons. Sometimes it's their choice, sometimes it isn't. A lot of positions that are very stable often come with a three-strikes-you're-out policy, some very rigid thing, if you don't, if you, no-show, no-call, you'll be out very quickly. When what we, what we'll learn is that, as Melissa's making this transition into full-time, stable employment, there are a lot of other things happening in her life that make it difficult for her to remain in that stable position. So what I ask you at this point, and this is something that Bridges Out of Poverty encourages everybody to do, is to set aside our mental models. Things that we already think we know about, Melissa. Because the things we're going to talk about today are research-based, and years and years of research that tell us what contributes to poverty, and those barriers that can help, that are preventing people from working their way out of poverty. I also like to give the disclaimer at this time, that I grew up in a household where I would say we were upper-poverty, lower-middle-class. Kind of depended on grand, if grandpa had been laid off from his union job or not. And I was able, I was the first person in my family to graduate from college, and have since been able to move out of that unstable situation. But I always like to kind of tell people what my background is, as I, as I tell the story of Melissa, so that you understand that part of this is personal for me. And it, when I, when I learned about some of the, these premises, it seemed to make a lot of sense to me. So we're going to learn a little bit more about Melissa. She could be in generational poverty, or situational poverty. Just like it sounds, situational is one of those where perhaps she grew up in a very stable household, went off to college, and perhaps got into a domestic violence situation, or maybe a teen pregnancy. Something that sort of took her off-track in a way, that put her into poverty, in what hopefully will be a short-term situation. And that the assistance that we have available to her can help her get back on track. Generational is different. Generational is when you grow up in a family of poverty. And that perhaps your parents grew up in a family of poverty. And that maybe the only people that you know are people who are also in poverty. And the research that we talk about today is mostly about generational poverty, as opposed to situational. We also know that poverty isn't just about money. It's not about this federal poverty line. It's about stability. And really, every time I say poverty, if you think about stability, that's really what we're talking about. What we find is that Melissa may have several resources in her life that are unstable, not just money. We also don't know if she even knows about the great resources that are already available in our community. We actually know that people come to Lincoln because we hear, they know that they can be supported. Or perhaps they have family that lives here, but that family doesn't know how to connect them to the great services we already have. So sometimes it's simply that lack of knowledge about what's available to them. Now, this is one of the most interesting slides to me when it comes to the research. The research shows that there's actually four causes of poverty. There's actually many, many causes of poverty, but they fall into four buckets. And the first is behaviors of the individual. And I think we would all sort of, we can all sort of think of situations where something happened, or a person made a choice that contributed to their poverty. But we also find that the absence of human and social capital within the community can be a huge deterrent to be able to get themselves out of poverty. You often hear it's not necessarily what you know, but who you know? Well, if you are living in a neighborhood where other, the people around you aren't connected to better job opportunities, more stability, it's hard to break out of that. Another is human exploitation. This is sexism, this is racism, these are things that are systemic in our communities. And we also know that there are some political and economic structures that tend to keep people in poverty. I don't have to give you all the examples, but things like the childcare benefits cliff. And I believe there's a cliff, a cliff even within SNAP, where, let's say Melissa is offered a promotion. Well, that's a great promotion, but that additional money is actually going to make her no longer qualified for her childcare benefits. And if she sits and does the math on it, she will actually take home less at the end of the month, if she takes that promotion. So it's not that she doesn't want to move up, and she doesn't want to make more money, the math just doesn't work. And until we can fix some of these cliffs, some of these structures, those are things that actually keep people making not what they need to survive. What I find most fascinating about the research continuum is that the research shows, if you look at it nationally, that these are all equal contributors to poverty. And I think we have a tendency to think it leans one way or another, but if you look at it as a whole, they're equal contributors. So I mentioned resources, and that, and that money is just one of the resources that contributes to poverty, or economic stability. So Bridges Out of Poverty has identified 11 essential resources, and we all have them. We could all sit and rank on a scale from one to 10 how well we're doing personally in these resources. And had I filled out that sort of analysis when I was 17-years-old, it would look much different than it looks today. But, one of the things, I'll go through the 11, because I think this is probably the thing that I found most fascinating, and really helped explain a lot. First, of course, is financial. And we all vary on levels of financial ability that we have at the moment. Number two is emotional. And this is the ability to be able to control your emotional response to situations. Some people can really handle any emotional experience and keep it very kind of close to the vest, while others sort of explode, or maybe, I was a crier, my brother was a yeller. And I think, looking back, is he really, he struggled to, with authority, because he would yell. And if I felt like I was being treated unfairly, I would cry. And apparently, crying on a woman is much more socially acceptable than yelling on a man. And I was able to navigate a little bit better because of that. Number three is mental and cognitive. This is your ability to be able to learn, to be able to learn the job, to be able to learn the systems around us. My brother and I both were pretty smart, we both got really good grades, so that was helpful for both of us. Number four is just one of my, my favorites, it's very fascinating to me, is, is the use of language and formal register. And when I talk about language, I'm talking about English as a first language. So this is, it'd be a whole different set of research if we're talking about people learning the English language. But these are people who are born into English-speaking families, right here in the US. And what we find is that a family that's living in generational poverty, those children are often exposed to far fewer words as children. Before, really between the ages of zero and five. So you hear Prosper Lincoln talking about early childhood, and this is why it's so important. It can make a huge difference in a child's ability to learn, but also, the way that they're able to speak, once they get into a workplace setting. So, one thing that I learned pretty quickly when I went to college, is that I spoke in a very casual register. And here I was, all of a sudden, in, with middle-class and upper-middle-class people, and I suddenly was learning a much bigger vocabulary than I had ever been exposed to. Even though I had a great public school education in a small town, I still was learning, just by being around people who were socio-economically more stable than I was. Now, what's interesting is that people who are able to switch back and forth between a casual register and a more formal register, tend to succeed better in the workplace. It's called code-switching. And, and I find that when I go back and visit my family, that I tend to slip back into that more casual register. And we all have, we all have different registers. You probably speak more casually around your family than you do sitting around this table. But I find that when I go back to my hometown, I cuss more, number one. And my children hear me say phrases that they've never heard me say before, and they're teenagers. They're like, "Mom, I've never heard that, you say that phrase." And it's just, it's a more casual phrase, it's something that I wouldn't necessarily say in a more formal situation. So people who have that ability to switch back and forth tend to be more successful. And why you have to switch back into casual register is because your family may not be very supportive of you, if you're throwing out these bigger words that you're learning. And I actually was told pretty frequently that I was getting too big for my britches, because I was using more formal language around my family. I had to learn to be more casual in my language with them. So people who can code-switch tend to be more successful, but if you're not able to get out of that casual register in the workplace, it can be a deterrent. Number five is social capital and support systems. We kind of touched on this earlier. It's not, these are the people who can support you, perhaps watch your kids while you go to work, help you with transportation, those sort of things, those people you can rely on to help you out when needed. And, you know, people who are wealthy sometimes lack this, if they move to a new community, but then they often sometimes have the skills to be able to expand that circle more quickly, than if you're living in a neighborhood that is unstable. Number six is physical. Do we have the physical strength to do the job? Are we healthy? Number seven is spiritual, which of course could be defined a million different ways, but I sort of describe it as, as hope, and that ability to sort of see a big picture. Number eight is integrity and trust. This is the ability to be able to work at a cash register and not stick a $5 bill in your backpocket. But I think we could all agree that there are people who are very high in financial resources, who aren't necessarily high in integrity and trust. I really believe that there's, it has nothing to do with your socioeconomic status as to whether you have integrity and trust. Number nine is motivation and persistence. This was another area where my brother and I differed. My brother, besides being a yeller, he also felt, he also couldn't persist if something went wrong. So he changed his major frequently. He actually went to college a couple of years before me, and graduated a couple of years after me. And it's because he kept changing his major, kept moving colleges, because he was never truly happy if he ran into a roadblock he couldn't get past it. Where I, on the other hand, stayed at a college that cost far too much, and I probably should not have stayed there, but I was persistent. I was going to get my degree. And that persistence is something that we all have given to us in different levels. So that's one of the things as well. Number 10 is, is relationships and role models. I'm a big believer that having an adult in your life at the right time can change everything. And I had an uncle that was married into my family, my Uncle Dan. And he, he owned a software company. And he used to, at family gatherings, say, "Clover, what are you going to study in college? What are you going to be when you grow up?" Nobody else in my family was asking me those questions, only Dan. And I don't, I think if Dan had not asked me those things, I don't know if I would have given much thought to what I was going to do. I don't know that I would have gone to college. But relationships and role models are those people in your life who come in at critical times to help you navigate those situations. And if you lack those, it can really hold you back. Number 11 is knowledge of the hidden rules. In this case, we often talk about hidden rules of the workplace. There are, there are certain ways you're supposed to dress, there's certain people you're not supposed to talk to, certain people you are supposed to talk to, and it's not written in a book anywhere. For me, it was learning the hidden rules of college. College was quite different from anything I had ever experienced before. But that ability to know the rules, or to acquire them quickly, can be life-changing for somebody. So we're going to go back to Melissa. We're finding that suddenly she's late to work regularly, and when she arrives, she's frazzled and not really prepared to be productive. And when our supervisor sits down to meet with her, to discuss the issue, she doesn't provide any information. She just sort of goes blank. Well, what we learn is that she is having a tyranny-of-the-moment situation. Her car has, she's been having car trouble, and that particular morning, she woke up and her son was sick, and she was afraid she wasn't going to be able to get her car started. She ended up getting a jump, getting her, her son over to Grandma and Grandpa's house, Grandma's house that lives clear on the other side of town. Grandma also wasn't feeling so well, but that was her only option, to be able to get to work in time. And on the way to work, she got pulled over for speeding. How many of us have ever gotten pulled over for speeding? All right, just making sure. It happens to all of us, I've got two stop classes under my belt. But, but the fact is, it happens to everybody, especially when you're stressed and not paying attention like you should. And then, at that point, of course, her car dies for good. And instead of calling AAA, which I would have the financial resources to do, she calls Uncle Ray. And Uncle Ray is a family friend, and he helps fix cars, and he was happy to come pick her up and give her a ride, and he's going to take care of her car, but it's going to be a few days. So here she is at work, and she's not even sure how she's going to get home. She's not sure how she's going to go pick up her son. She's feeling bad about leaving her son with her mother. She's got a speeding ticket. Now, we all have tyranny-of-the-moment days. We all do. And I could give you an example of mine, but let's be real, I have the resources to be able to deal with that day, and at the end of the day, I know it's over, and tomorrow's going to be better. And I'm going to go home, and I'm going to pour myself a glass of wine, I'm going to turn on Netflix, and nobody's going to judge me for that. But if Melissa were to do it, would she be judged for it? To go home and have a drink? Perhaps she would. So, we all have tyranny-of-the-moment. It happens to us personally, it happens to us in our, our businesses, it happens to us in our cities, it happens to us in our countries. It happens. And it's the way that we're able to, what resources we have available to us, to get us through it, that matter. Let me check time.
Worried about Uncle Ray under that wheel.
You know, I've never really looked very closely at the picture. It's really funny that you mention that. There is a jack, right there. Yeah, there's, okay. It's one of the, yeah. But, you know, that, honestly, that's probably how he's doing it, as opposed to AAA, who has these jacks that are like amazing. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So one of the things that was also developed as part of Bridges Out of Poverty, is they actually had individuals who are taking the Getting Ahead classes. And these are people who are working their way out of poverty. And it's sort of a self-exploration class, that helps them sort of see what resources they do have available to them, and what they might be lacking. And they asked somebody like Melissa to draw out what her mental model was like, how she's living in an unstable situation. And this is what she, this is what she drew. It includes things that, that we all are concerned about, things like our job, and our money, and housing. But she also has crime and safety. Most likely, she lives in a neighborhood that is more unsafe. She also has agency time, which is something that I don't have to deal with. If she needs to go apply for some sort of service, she's going to have to go during agency hours. So she literally has to take a day off of work in order to go get additional assistance. Not something that I would necessarily have to think about. So we know that her life is very full. And then, the next one might as well have been drawn by me, because this is the mental model for stability. And that's really, my life's super busy, but none of it is something that I can't handle. And I want to show the difference, because what her driver is, right there in the middle, is relationships. Her relationship with her mother, her relationship with Uncle Ray. Those are her priorities. Where instability, we tend to drive ourselves more on achievement. What's next? What's the next goal? Are we going to be able to remodel our house? Where are we, how are we going to finance our kids going to college? They're different questions than what Melissa is asking herself. So we're looking at things like retirement. I can promise you, retirement is not something that Melissa's giving a whole lot of thought to. She is having day-to-day tyranny-of-the-moment, where it's a completely different way of looking at things. So this is often where I mention to a business, you know, you may offer a 401K, but that's not necessarily an appealing option for somebody who's still living in instability. Really, healthcare benefits that start immediately is what she would love. And in most businesses, they're delayed, until you've been there a while. So I think it's just sort of important to see the difference between Melissa's life and my life, because we have a tendency to build businesses and build policy around a middle-class lens. What can our middle-class working families handle? That's different than those who are living in instability. So, I'll come back to the slide and say, you know, how does policy sort of overarch all this? Where are there ways that we can take what we learned today, and think about it as we form policy, and as we make decisions? How do we be more inclusive, looking beyond the middle-class mindset that we might be used to, when we're forming policy? And really, if we want to bring people together across economic lines, we must become conscious of our own experience, and be open to hearing about others' experiences and how they're different. So I hope I was able to give you sort of a, a brief look at that today. And as you think about what you're doing in the future, if you can sort of think about our Melissa's of the community, that's what I'd encourage you to do.
Can we get copies of the presentation?
I can do that, just promise not to share it with anybody, because it's all owned by Aha! Process. Yes, but yes, I'll make sure.
I think, let me jump in here and say something about the policy piece. And there's a lot of conversation right now about low-income people and the justice system. And I saw an article a couple of weeks ago that said, "A speeding ticket should cost me more than it does one of our distribution center workers." Because they would, you know, I got a ticket coming out of East Campus six months ago, and altogether, it was a hundred bucks. I can, I have the luxury of affording that. To, just, a lot of our people at the Food Bank, that'd be, that'd be a problem, you know, that they just don't have that hundred bucks. And, and then that can turn into an arrest, and on and on, you know? Somebody was suggesting that if somebody gets a speeding ticket, if they're low-income, it should be 25, and if I get the speeding ticket, it should be 100, you know, or something like that. But these are the systems that are in place that can tend to be punishing the low-income people, a lot of that. We have about two minutes.
Yeah, I know. I'll skip most of my questions, but it was interesting when you went through the, I asked questions.
That's okay. I usually do this in an hour, so I apologize for squeezing it down to 30 minutes.
You talked in there on your 11 points, and going through several of them, it seems like what that's reflecting is a breakdown, I think you said, a breakdown in society. And a lot of those values, as I thought about individuals like Scott, myself, you know, a little bit more gray-haired, those are things we grew up with. And I've always believed, and maybe I've got the wrong attitude or approach, but I think those, there are those certain values that are important and core every, no matter what age you're in, whether it were centuries ago, or whatever. And it's disappointing to see those break down, because despite economic levels, and I was not in a very... I was not in a very prosperous household growing up, my parents were highly educated, but they had the expectations and did have the nuclear family. But those values just don't seem to go away yet. To look around us, it's like people are ignoring them, you know, it's like coming down and some of the cellphone abbreviation, just whatever. I don't, do you have any comments on that?
Well, I think what they're saying is that with generational poverty as we've seen it, there, there's been a breakdown in hope. At least that's the way I look at it. You have, you saw that your parents weren't able to overcome and their parents weren't able to overcome, what makes me think I can do anything different? There also seems to be a shift, and I've, I've done some reading on it, but there seems to be a shift in where it used to be that a family really wanted their children to do better than the parents did. There's been a shift in that, especially in families with a long history here in America. I'm not talking about refugee families. They're, they're really encouraging of their kids to get further education. It's our American families where the parents actually would rather see their kids drop out of high school and get a job and work to contribute to the family because we're, we have to make ends meet than to necessarily encourage school beyond high school. If you talk to a high school counselor, they would agree with me, that, that has changed that value of education and that value of getting a stable kind of job. And it's not necessarily about going off to college. It's about having a stable career. Where often mom and dad didn't have stable careers. That's the kind of families that we're talking about here.
Okay. Time is up. And it's my job to make sure the next meeting starts only one minute late instead of five minutes late.
I will, I will. I'll send you my contact.
Mail's questions or whatever.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.